We're at the L now, Resolutions for Discussion and/or Action. And, number one, we have before us a resolution, reference one, that would authorize our town manager to contract with Eric Weiss for creating and proposing a bike plan for the town. So, I'll open it up for any discussion and/or my motion.
And that resolution is going to include signing a contract for the $41,800, is that correct?
That's right, yeah.
I would like to have something added that we find sources for the funding and not come out of the general budget. I mean unless, is this coming out of Parks and Rec? I wouldn't think so.
We've identified a source of funding that's not the general fund.
And it is just a secret?
I'll call it the Activities Fund, but it's not the Activities Fund.
Is that under Parks and Rec?
No.
It'll be under the, well, Agency Fund. Agency Fund, yeah.
Well, I'd like to look into some more grant money or something available, something like this. It's got to be if the state's jumping in on, there's got to be some grant money available. You know, I, boy, I could really do some more.
I don't understand what an agency is.
We can look into that as well.
All right. Yeah, I think we need to, because I think we should do this, but I don't think, I think we need to find grants or tell her whether that impacts the funding.
If I might, I think all these comments have been registering, but this resolution is just to authorize the town manager to pursue it with Mr. Weiss in cogent consulting. I guess the best funding avenue is up to Mr. Waters to come up with. So, if there's no other comment regarding the resolution.
Yeah, I have another comment.
Okay.
If you would, would Mr. Weiss know of any, I don't know if this question's kind of out of the book, but would you know of the grants actively? I know you mentioned the Chamberlain Foundation, I know we do a lot of work with the Chamberlain Foundation, but are you aware of any grant programs coming out, or are they out? Or is there anything that the town council, you've seen how we're taking the fourth one on this, would be available?
I'm not aware of anything that would be a good candidate for a contract like this one. Yeah, the funding that I'm familiar with would be more for implementing programs. If you wanted to put together an education program, teaching bicycle safety skills to kids, for instance, so that they would be safer out on the streets, that sort of program is a good candidate for certain types of funds. But a planning contract, I'm afraid I don't know any particular sources for that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, again, it's the projected budget for the agreement would be $4,180, is that right, Mr. Waters?
Correct.
Okay, and the best avenue to find that money is, I guess, will be the charge to the town manager if we approve the resolution. So, I'll entertain a motion to pass the resolution at this time, if anyone wishes to.
I like what I heard, so I'll make a motion to authorize the manager to go through it to the contract.
Okay, motion made, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Mrs. Bacon seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? I guess it's all ayes. Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. All right, so number, number two we have, Mrs. George, why don't you read that one? I know we moved the next one up, but we'll take number two first.
Resolution Designating Coventry as a C-PACE participant and authorizing the town manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the town.
Okay, Mr. Waters, would you like to leave us in on this one?
Sure, this resolution came before the town council, I forget how many meetings ago.
Yes.
The council had a number of questions regarding the agreement between the town and the Infrastructure Bank, Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, and the agreement. Tonight, I believe there's somebody here from the Infrastructure Bank.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Ryan Mulcahy, I am a program analyst with the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. I'll just start by saying, would it be helpful if I gave a quick overview of the C-PACE program and then I can answer any questions, or we could jump right to questions, whatever?
That sounds good to me.
Okay, great. So, just for those of you who may not be familiar with who we are, we're a quasi-state agency. We were previously known as the Clean Water Finance Agency. So, we were created in 1989 to administer the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which I believe the town has taken advantage of over the years for some sewer projects. We also oversee the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. And a couple of years back, 2015, we were renamed the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank to reflect the fact that our responsibilities were no longer limited to clean water. So, we were given at that time a couple of new programs, one of which is the C-PACE program. And so, I see that all of you have the PowerPoint presentation, so I will not go through the entire thing, but I will just kind of hit on some of the main points of what the program is and kind of how it works. So, C-PACE is a program that allows private property owners of commercial and industrial properties to access financing for energy efficiency and renewable energy improvements to their properties. So, it allows them to access 100% financing, which is long-term. In this case, that means up to 25 years, with the idea being that the businesses lower their energy costs through these projects and are able to put together cash flow positive projects whereby they are saving more money than what they're paying to repay the loan, basically. So, this program, the loans that are made through this program are all private dollars. So, we are not using state or public taxpayer dollars to make loans through the C-PACE program. What we've done is we pre-qualified these private capital providers, which can be banks, credit unions, specialty lenders, et cetera, who make the loans through our program. So, right now, we have three private capital providers that we pre-qualified, and we have several others that have expressed interest or are kind of going through that pre-qualification process right now. So, the way that things work is, a building owner can choose a preferred capital provider if they have one. So, let's say they have a bank that they work with to do their normal banking. They could move forward with that bank. If they're not already qualified to our program, they can come to us, we walk them through that process and then qualify them. Or alternatively, if they don't have a particular lender that they prefer to use, we basically put things out to bid. We do have a program administrator, which is a third-party engineering firm that we've contracted with to handle the day-to-day administration of the program. That company is called Sustainable Real Estate Solutions. They do a similar, or they perform similar duties for Connecticut's C-PACE program, as well as on Colorado and in a couple of other places. So, I think one of the key pieces of the program and what makes it possible for the property owners to receive 100% financing, as well as a long-term of up to 25 years, which is really unusual if you just think about a regular commercial loan, what makes that possible is that there's actually a voluntary tax lien that is placed on the property. So, this is a municipal lien, it is subordinate to your municipal tax lien, but it is above any existing mortgage or any existing mortgage that's on the property. As a result of that, we do require that whoever owns that existing mortgage provide written consent. That's a process that we have successfully completed with a couple of banks here in Rhode Island thus far. And throughout the country, there have been a number of banks in Connecticut. Their program has been up now for about three years, they've done about $100 million in loans to date, and they have had a large number of banks who have agreed to subordinate, to willingly subordinate their mortgage to the C-PACE lien. So, just in terms of what kinds of eligible property types I'm referring to when I say commercial, industrial, basically office, retail, hotel, industrial, so manufacturing, for example, healthcare, nonprofits are eligible, as well as multifamily of five or more units. We've got a partial list in the PowerPoint of eligible improvements, just to give you an idea of the kinds of projects that could come through this program. So, we've got things like boilers, chillers, and furnaces, lighting, hot water heating, HVAC, solar panels, pumps, motors, and drives. So, basically, anything that saves energy or produces clean energy is eligible to be financed through this program. Now, I will just talk briefly about what the role of the municipality is. I'm sure that that's something that you're all very interested in hearing. Really, the role of the municipality is quite limited in this program, and that was a conscious decision on the part of the Infrastructure Bank when we were putting the program together. So, the way that C-PACE works, in, as far as I know, every other state that has adopted this program, is that the municipality itself is actually responsible for the billing and collection of the C-PACE loan. We, early on in the process, had a meeting with the Rhode Island Tax Collectors Association, and they expressed some concerns about a number of different things related to that, namely co-mingling of funds, administrative burden, that kind of thing. And so, what we decided to do is we actually contracted out with two separate entities. One, we contracted with Vision Government Solutions, who you may be familiar with. I don't know if they do the property tax billing here in Coventry. They do it in something like 32 of the 39 communities in Rhode Island. So, they will actually be doing the billing. They send out the bills. And then, on the collection side, we've contracted out with a local bank to operate a lockbox on our behalf. So, basically, the property owner would get the bill from Vision, they repay it to the lockbox, we then send that money over to whoever the capital provider was. So, we essentially just took the municipality out of that process in an attempt to reduce the administrative burden on the town. So, you are probably wondering why we need you to opt in, and the answer is that state law requires that municipalities willingly opt in through a council resolution to participate in this program. The reason that was done has to do with what I discussed as far as how other states did the program, where municipalities themselves have to do the billing and collection. It was an instance where the state did not want to put a mandate on communities that didn't want to do it. And so, the requirement is still there in state law that the municipality has to opt in by council resolution. And that's why this resolution is here before you. I'll just finish up by saying, we do have, to date, we've had 15 municipalities across the state that have opted into the program. There should be a list there near the end of the presentation. Most recently, we had Central Falls join the program, but we've had a number of other municipalities across the state, you know, ranging from the larger ones like Providence to some of the small communities like Charlestown in the southern part of the state. So, we've got a good mix. West Walworth, your neighboring community, of course, is also participating in this program. So, I think with that, you know, I'm happy to answer any and all questions that you might have about the program, about Infrastructure Bank in general.
I think Central Falls is number 15, because we have 14 listed.
Okay, yeah, they just, it was just last week, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good representation, at this point, of our cities and towns in Rhode Island. And again, I believe I heard that you have addressed the League of Cities and Towns as well, a presentation?
Yeah, I believe that when the program was being put together, we did.
Not yourself?
Not myself, no.
Okay, all right, well, I'll open it up to any specific questions that members of the council might have. I don't know, Mr. Waters, if you'd want to have anyone from our finance department comment or not? It'd be your call, but first maybe questions, or do you think maybe it's better hearing from our finance department first?
Staff might be able to answer a lot.
Yeah, might eliminate some questions, okay.
Mr. TiVo or Ms. Howell, would you like to?
Right, because I know that.
I have a couple of questions, we can get a chance, Mr. President.
Right, all right, we'll get to the questions after we hear from our department, I guess. Firstly, might eliminate some questions. Hi, Mrs. Wool.
Actually, hi, actually, we have questions.
You have questions, okay.
I have questions, yes.
All right, that's fair then.
I'm scared to answer them, that's.
All right, it works.
Yeah, I was reading the contract.
Yeah, talk into the mic if you could, the audience, we can hear you, all right?
I was reading the contract, and under section three, the billing and collection of PIB, you stated that we don't have to do the billing or collection, which, awesome. But, the contract itself says, "The municipality acting by and through Vision shall bill the PACE assessments." That wording kind of makes me uncomfortable, because it makes it sound like if we sign this contract at the moment, we don't have to do the billing, but at a later time, we signed that we would.
And Brian, if you'd like to come back up to the podium to help answer some of these questions.
Sure. I didn't catch that section you were talking about.
Section three, page five.
Page five, okay. Page five, section. Page, page four, okay. Section three, all right.
Section three, E, billing and collection.
Read, okay, you got that, or maybe you don't.
Collection, payment.
Yes, number two.
Page five.
Page five, E. Vision Government Services, okay.
Okay, so, the line of course shows, "The municipality acting by and through Vision shall bill the PACE assessments in the same manner as it bills its real property taxes or other municipal assessments." So, the reason that this language is included in the agreement is because the state law that created this program, as I stated earlier, envisioned that the municipality itself would be doing the billing and collection. And so, that statute states that the bill for the C-PACE loan has to be, and I forget the exact language, but has to be in substantially similar form to a property tax bill from the community. So, basically, the way it would work is that Vision crafts the bill in such a way that it looks like your property tax bill. But, we have no, I don't anticipate that there would be any scenario where we would force or require the town to do the billing.
Could that wording be changed to "Vision acting on behalf of the municipality"?
It could, I mean, I'm happy to talk to our council to see if that would be acceptable.
Say, say what?
Acting on the municipality.
To say, instead of the municipality acting by, from Vision, change that to "Vision acting on behalf of the municipality." It makes them responsible.
And is that the same area, E, is that the same section?
Yeah, yeah, just use the wording, two.
E two.
Oh, two.
Let me ask the council, so we don't have to do contract negotiations.
Yeah, right.
If you all would like to pass, or consider passing the resolution, it leaves the signing of the contract up to me.
The manager, right.
We have our town solicitor here, we have our tax collector here who has the questions. We can work on these questions and answers to everybody's satisfaction afterwards, before the contract is signed. So, the resolution does give the town manager the authority to sign. Decide to sign the contract form.
So, this agreement could be amended, possibly amended, depending on.
Yes.
On the state, et cetera, okay. I see, another thing a little further down, it says, "The penalties and interest on delinquent PACE assessments shall be charged and collected by Vision," but it doesn't say anything about not regular, you know, the regular payers being charged and collected by Vision. It only says that the, well, it says that "Vision shall bill the PACE assessments."
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly have our council talk with the solicitor and, you know, kind of iron out the language to where you all would be comfortable or more comfortable with it.
Yeah, I certainly would, you know, would be okay with that, you counsel me, but I'm not okay with okaying anything until it comes back in front of us and we see the complete document before we sign it, no way. But you guys and this town manager, solicitor, you work with it, but I would like to see.
I also have a question. Page six, under J, promotion of the program. "The municipality shall use good faith efforts to assist RIB in local marketing efforts and outreach to the local business community to encourage participation in the C-PACE program, such as including C-PACE program information on the municipality's website, distributing an informational letter from the chief elected official to local businesses regarding the program, and conducting one or more business roundtable events." So, we have to market C-PACE?
You know, I know what this provision says. The reality is that we would encourage you to do so, but really, we leave it up to each city or town to market it as much or as little as they say they do. So, some of the communities that have opted into the program have decided that they'd like to be very active in marketing it, others have less of a desire to do so, and that's perfectly fine with us.
I mean, it is just a service that we're offering our business already, you know that.
Correct.
Look, but it's, I mean, but it's alluding to the fact that we need to market it, it's in the contract, so I certainly don't want them coming back before we're not promoting it on our website and not marketing and holding, you know, business roundtable events. So, you know, we're supposed to market that?
Yeah, yeah. For Mr., is it Fitz Mulcahy, yes. So, the way I understand this program is, the items that you're installing on the properties are not real estate, so you can't really do a mortgage on them in the usual way. This is kind of a substitute for a mortgage, or a chattel mortgage, you know, personal property mortgage, where you're using the tax collection system as a way to implement the debt collection on the 25-year payment plan that is envisioned when these items, which are not real estate, they're not fixtures of the property, are financed. And I think the big concern is where the rubber meets the road. The law does seem to indicate that the municipality shall do things, and the agreement certainly says that, but it's through Vision appraisal. What I've noticed in the agreement is, it never says that the municipality isn't responsible for any of this. It says it can do it through Vision, not Vision appraisal, but Vision, whatever arm of the company is doing this. And I think that's the source of the concern by the council, just my listening here. How do you avoid that? I realize it's a good program, it brings a lot of financing opportunities in for existing businesses, and that's the real inducement to the town.
Correct.
Is that we get to offer financing that other towns might not. But, I think we need something that shows the town will never be on the hook for collecting debts for private enterprise.
Okay.
Because that just seems like a really strange orientation for a municipality. I think if we had that, my sense of the council is that they would probably get behind the program. But there has to be something really, really bulletproof in this agreement that says, "Look, we will record your Exhibit A," you know, there's an Exhibit A to your agreement that says the town shall record this.
Yep.
But once we do that, they're on their own. We're just a conduit, using our land evidence records to create this proof of debt. But after, and I think that's what they want.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly, as you just described, it's certainly our intent, and I think that to the extent that we can make this agreement reflects.
I think a clause that just says, "In no event shall the municipality ever be responsible for collecting any of the outstanding balances due and owing on any of the, you know, agreements." I think that would get us really close.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I certainly would be happy to have our legal counselor reach out to yourself and, you know.
It's a very unusual idea, but it really could pay dividends for the town. I understand that part, by attracting good business here. So, there is a lot of virtue to it. We just got to know we're not creating any liability for the town.
Yep, understandable.
And I think if, before a vote, I think that would need to be done. If, I can anticipate three not approving it tonight, at least, a majority. But I think we all would like to be comfortable, that's for sure. I know it is a good plan, that's why you have 15 cities on board. The others will be coming, it's just that maybe the word, wording could be, you know, changed a little bit to make all councils comfortable with the vote upcoming. Mrs. Carlson, do you have another question?
Yeah, I, I've looked at C-PACE, and I've looked at it in other states, and I did see, there's just, and I understand what it wants to do, obviously, and I think, but I don't understand why the town has to be in the middle. Because we're not in, we have enough to do, collecting our own taxes. We shouldn't be the middle man representing C-PACE and RIB. I don't think that's our job. But also, then you have select contractors, you have approved contractors on your list. And I don't know if we could even verify if these are good contractors. I mean, I personally don't know your criteria. There are a couple on that list that I don't think are probably good business people. And then, we're, then we, I would think that we would have to worry about protecting our businesses in town from your approved contractors. I mean, there's just a lot in this that, what's the advantage to the town? I don't see an advantage of us getting in the middle of something that frankly, we don't, we shouldn't be involved in, loaning and loans and approvals and, you know.
Yeah, just a couple of things that you mentioned there. First of all, the contractor's side, certainly, I understand where you're coming from, and we share your concern in terms of wanting to make sure that businesses and consumers in general are, you know, not being taken advantage of or, you know, dealing with bad actors. So, as you alluded to, we do qualify these contractors before we allow them to complete projects through the program. That involves ensuring that they hold all of the necessary licenses, that they're in good stand with the state, and so on. We also, as a second step, or it really is the biggest thing that we do from a consumer protection point of view, this third-party engineering firm that we contracted with, SRS, Sustainable Real Estate Solutions, conducts a very rigorous analysis of every single project before it's even allowed to go to financing. So, they check all of the contractor's numbers to make sure that they're not using assumptions that are outside industry norms. And so, they really act as kind of the entity that protects the consumers. So, you know, I couldn't agree with you more that when you're dealing, you know, sometimes there are contractors who maybe are not, you know, that they don't do things on the up and up. And we certainly don't want to have a scenario where businesses are being taken advantage of and something like.
So, again, the other question is, what's in it for us?
Right.
We want the businesses to get the best possible loans and deals they can, but why do we have to be in the middle?
Yeah, so.
We have a small staff in this town, they're already working hard, they probably don't need the extra burden.
Sure, yeah, well, so, I mean, our intent when we, when we, when we were putting the program together, we certainly understood exactly what you're saying. And, you know, there are a number of towns throughout the state that, you know, really, their staff. are a number of towns throughout the state that, you know, really, their, their staff is, does have a lot of responsibility, and so the last thing we wanted to do is, is to put more on them, which is why we ended up going the route of, of contracting out with Vision to do the billing and setting things up with the lockbox so that we would do the collection, because, you know, we felt that was one less thing that we were, that the municipality would be responsible for. Really, the, the, the only real responsibilities that are placed on the community now are recording the lien, which we come, one of our own causes, we place the lien on the property. We do pay any fees that are associated with that. And also informing us if that, if a property that has a C-Pace lien on it goes into tax sale. Those are the two big things. I know that certainly the agreement does talk about marketing and promoting the program, but, you know, really, a- as I said earlier, we see that as more of a, you know, if, if a community wants to take a really active role in promoting it, we're, you know, great, but if not, you know, we're not gonna, this isn't something where we're trying to force people to market something, I think that's their well.
When we have a tax lien, don't, we have an attorney involved, correct? That we pay to go to tax sale?
Yeah.
So who's covering those costs? And if Vision, you'd need the program from Vision, do we pay for that program? Do we, do we, I mean, I think we already have Vision, but is this another program from Vision? Well, are there costs associated to the town for this?
A sub, no, there, there should not be. But, you know, again, because the, you know, the two, I guess there could be, you know, an administrative cost too if there's a tax sale to informing us, but that's generally pretty standard process, I believe, to inform anyone who has a lien on a property. I don't want to speak for the, for, for the towns.
Does it go, what is it, like $300 or something? Is it?
It's, it's a flat fee of $2.50 per title, so it doesn't, it's not for them. It's a flat fee per property.
Right.
Then we notify anything that gets billed for the tax sale, gets billed to the property. So if we send them bills, it would get billed from the property. But my concern is with bringing up this municipal lien certificates.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to put that on the municipal lien certificates. Now, I was told through Vision that amounts due would be available through a portal. Now suppose the portal is not up to date and our municipal lien certificate is not correct, what's, what's the repercussions to us? Because if our, if it's not on my municipal lien certificate, and it has to be, then you lose your money. Are you coming after us?
That's, well, that is not a scenario that, that I had thought of, but certainly we can, I think if we take it offline, we could discuss that further.
She's good at this.
They're the ones that have to worry about losing their money, not us.
No, but if we sign this contract, we're saying we're gonna do a municipal lien certificate. If I sign that municipal lien certificate and the portal's not up to date.
Municipal lien certificate on what?
On, on whatever property you might have one of these liens. If I sign that.
Yep.
And the portal is not up to date, or the lien wasn't put in the records before I signed that municipal lien certificate, now we don't have that money on that certificate. Once I sign a certificate, anything that's not on there, we eat. We can't have it. So if.
I don't understand where you, where you, where you go with that. Because, I mean, we're, we're not after what they, what's owed them.
According to this contract.
We would be after what's owed, owed to the town.
According to this contract.
Yep.
And we have to put what's owed them on our certificate. That's a legal document that I'm signing that's saying everything that's owed.
Where does that, where does that say that in this?
Section three, B, page four.
I think we have a lot of issues with this that we need.
I mean, the whole, but then there's another section in here too, that with an indemnification, you know, that reads that the municipality will be held harmless for, you know, for, you know, any of that, any of that stuff. I mean, which is further down, we would include it all. But I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious that if we didn't, you know, include that in the certificate, but that's why on any certificate that we would have to go, you gotta notify them first.
No, municipal lien certificates are not certificates of sale.
But what you're saying, part of the agreement, we'd have to notify them if we were going to a tax sale, if we were quote, going to a tax sale.
A municipal lien certificate is something completely different. That's something we do like 30, 40 of a week.
Okay.
You sell your property.
Yep.
When you sell your property, they ask me for a municipal lien certificate, the attorneys, and that's gonna talk about any taxes, sewer, whatever, that's owed on that property.
Yep.
If I miss something and you sell, I can't collect it. If it doesn't get paid, I can't collect it. So they're asking that that be put on the municipal lien certificate, which is basically making me legally liable for anything that's owed them, because we're signing something saying I'm gonna put this on the certificate. So now if I sign the certificate and that lien is not on there because we missed it, it wasn't in the portal, something wasn't working right, are we liable for the money they're gonna lose?
Not according to the indemnification clause.
I understand, no.
It said, I think it says, Monique, it says, "To the extent required by law, the municipality shall include outstanding pays liens on municipal lien certificates."
Right.
But I don't think right now the law requires it. Isn't that right, Mr. Mulcahy? I don't read anything in Title, Title 39, Chapter 26.5, which is the chapter that created the PACE program. I don't see anything in there that says that we are required by law to put a private enterprise's debt on our municipal lien certificate.
So, I, I, I know that the, well, so this is actually a municipal lien as opposed to a privately, I don't know if that makes any difference to what you're referring to.
So then you're, you're saying, since it, then it would have to be included, but where does it say it's a municipal lien? See, I thought we had spent the time making sure that it wasn't a municipal lien, and that you were just using our municipal tax reporting program as a means to memorialize your lien. You're saying it is a municipal, how is it a municipal lien?
It's called one here in G. The very last, sorry. It says, outstanding pays liens on municipal lien certificates. The one that you said, that to the extent required by law, the municipality shall include outstanding pays liens on municipal lien certificates.
Just said to the extent required by law.
I'm asking if there is any requirement in the law. I don't see it.
I, I think that that is probably another question that our council would, they have a better answer to than me.
Okay.
Can I suggest it? You know, we need to re-table this and just, and work on, you know, getting some of these, I think it's a great idea, I really do, but I think we need to finalize this and get it so we feel comfortable, we feel safe, and then come back and, you know, when we come up with it.
Sure, happy to do that.
Okay.
I just, I just have one more question, because you, Monique started asking the question about Vision. Do we have that, that part of that program that you would need for this, or would that be something we would?
That, I really don't need a program. I, I need to get the Vision.
Okay.
They, they do have something. That was one question that I had, but, let's see that.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they have the answer.
Okay.
Okay, I think we have a motion, then I need you to table this while work is done, and hopefully bring it back to the next month's council meeting. Do I have a second on, on tabling it? Do we not? Or do we, do we need a motion to table it? Or just table it?
You can just table it.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you, thank you for coming out, and I guess there's additional work to do.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have a request, I understand that our building committee is hanging out with the council tonight until the resolution for the, or the contract. The council would like to consider moving number eight up.
Yes.
So the building committee can.
Right, I, I have no problem with that at all, but is that before what we move, we get the next one, N2, reference, reference 10B, we also have to talk about, but this will be in between? Is that how we're looking at it now?
We're still, we want us to take the motion committee to be.
Right.
Yes.
Right, yeah, because Monique, you'll still be here after we get done with this next one, right?
Yes.
You wanted to be here for the delinquent collection service contract, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, why don't, if it's all right with the council, we'll, we'll do number eight next, which is reference 5A, and we have that in front of us. You wanna read it, Mrs. George, or, I guess we all have it to read, but go ahead.
Resolution awarding a contract for architectural services for the Cowabunga Police Department Building Services Foundation.
Okay, and again, not to exceed, what, $594,000. Everyone's got that in front of them and.
Motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution to approve the contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for waiting. I knew we wanted to get it up front. We, we got the one up front, but not the part two. All right, thank you again. Thank you for waiting. All right. All right, now we have the one we moved up, which is reference 10B, or N2, reference 10B. So who wants to start on this one? Mr. Waters or Mr. Tebow on this? Mr. Tebow, 10B.
Monique's prepared to, uh?
Yeah, stop the discussion.
Okay, great, thank you. Someone start.
Currently, we use Hotter, Line and Hammer to collect our taxes, and I would like to change to municipal collection agency for various reasons. One of them, Hotter, Line and Hammer takes 25% of whatever they collect, whether it go to legal or not, and MCA will only charge 15% for those that don't have to go to judgment and 23% for those that do. Hotter, Line and Hammer, I've had issues with the way they apply payments. They don't apply the same way we do, so I never match. They don't seem to want to match with me. MCA is willing to doctor their collection to match ours exactly, and their process is they want to match after every single time they send us payments. With HLH, I can't send payments by year, I have to send account totals, which makes it difficult for me to balance as well. MCA is willing to take things by year. The communication between HLH and myself has kind of broken down over the years. They've had kind of change in ownership, and it's not all on their side, it's my side as well, because sometimes I don't know what they're looking for. But the bottom line is, I don't really like the communication, I'm not really impressed with their collection rate anymore. I think we can do better, especially if we can keep more of the money. This, this agency, I had glowing reviews from the City of Providence, from Johnston, from Portsmouth, from, I think, Department of Labor. I mean, they do all municipalities, that's all they do. They're not a typical collection agency.
If I may, I mean, it's no brainer. I mean, if you're happy with, if you're gonna be happy, you're not happy with who you work with now, there's no cost to the town, we're saving money for the town. And Bob, if you don't have any problem with it, I'm fine with it. I mean, this is way above me, I mean, it, it, it doesn't make a difference to me who you have collecting it. Like I said, my concern is that it's gonna cost the town, if you're happy with it, I'm fine with it.
Well, no, there is a cost to the town, but it's all only above.
Well, you put less on, okay, not less, I mean, yes, there is a cost.
So it's 10% on?
It's, it's 15% on those that don't go to court and 23% that, to those that do.
You said that they were at 25%.
They're at 25% no matter what. Even if, even if they, the minute they send that letter out, even if they don't collect it and three years later I manage to get it, I still have to pay them 25%, which.
They're not collecting it in that, no, absolutely. So saving on both sides. Now what about the agreement there? What if, you know, I mean, if we happen to, you know, collect something years later or somebody came in here to pay it, then it go on to collection without, without.
If we have judgments, Nick, I think if we have judgments, we have to let them keep it and collect whatever they've got, but other than that, I believe we're able to pull everything back and give it to.
You don't have to, but you can allow them. You can allow the, the present firm to continue prosecuting the judgments for collection if you want. It's really up, it's up to the town.
Okay, yeah, all right, yeah.
The town is the client, so the town always.
So if it has no judgment, you know, you can, you can pull it back.
Okay.
Or even if there is a judgment, but it's probably more practical in most cases to let them continue with it. It's, but it's up, it's up to the tax collector and the solicitor to decide that, and I almost always defer to what Ms. Cool wants, because that's always expedient.
Okay, any other discussion? I guess it would be to approve this contract. There's no resolution, it's just.
There should.
I don't see any resolution unless I'm missing it.
Oh, well.
It's just approve the, the contract.
You're right, there is no resolution, it's just to approve the contract.
That's.
And to the extent necessary to appoint as an assistant solicitor when they do prosecute cases, which is allowed under the charter.
Right, which is in there, yes. Authorization for town solicitor to execute same pursuant to the charter, section 7, 0.01, Assistant Solicitor.
Yes.
Reference 10B is what we're having, so we're just making a motion to approve this contract. All right, and I think, do I, did I get a motion, Mr. McGee, on that, or?
I'll give the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. All right, contract approved. All right, we're going back now to our regular order of the agenda, and that brings up under L, number three, awarding the bid for the purchase and installation of carpeting at the Cobbie Public Library, reference three, and I see Mrs. Blanche Chet approaching. Good evening.
Hello.
Sorry, no, wait. You wanna comment on this reference we have before us?
Something doesn't like me.
The mic?
Yeah, never has. I wrote a Chaplin grant last year, it was awarded, we were awarded $55,230 to replace the carpeting in the library. We're going with tile carpeting this time instead of broadloom. We went out to bid, we received only one bid, we were expecting two. The second company had the wrong date down, so maybe it's just as well, we just got the one bid. So tonight, I'd like you to pass a resolution awarding the bid to Kelly Floor Covering of the tucket. They've done quite a bit of library work in the past. I have a, just a couple of paragraphs about them, if you'd like to see it. You don't really care.
We touched, and it is being funded by the Chaplin Foundation's grant?
That's right.
I see that, that's important, Nick.
And the amount of the bid is $51,800, so we come in under, under, under what we expected.
All right, that's great. Motion to approve the resolution now?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, second, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Number four, reference four. Uh, Mrs. George?
Resolution awarding contract for gasoline and diesel purchases provided for in the department of public works vehicle maintenance.
Okay, Mr. McGee, good evening. Everyone's been waiting patiently. Go right ahead on this thing.
Before I start, I want to apologize, I had to go earlier to put the, I mean, the air conditioning down somewhere along the way, between here and Public Works, my glasses fell off, so I'll do my best with not having my eyes, so please bear in mind.
Okay.
Every three years, the state MPA Master Price Agreement comes out for the statewide for the diesel and gasoline. for the diesel and gasoline, unleaded gasoline. This is the newest one that just came out, and we're making a resolution, asking the town to pass this resolution on the agreement for unleaded gasoline and diesel fuel to Peterson's Oil Service. The way it works is we have a daily price that comes out under the, they call it the JOT, the joint operations task. That's the base price throughout the state. And then they have a upcharge, a percentage, so many cents per gallon for administration and for delivery. These are delivery prices. Same as it was last year, we're actually saving a little bit less on the unleaded gasoline and it's about one penny more on the diesel fuel.
Okay, questions for Mr. McGee and the council regarding the resolution? If not, I'll entertain a motion to pass the resolution. Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Okay, thank you. And also we have number five as reference 4A. Also, Mr. McGee?
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a resolution before us tonight. It is for the purchase of two Ford F-550 pickup truck, cabin chassis trucks during, after the winter of last year. Our, both of our 2002 pickups, excuse me, one-ton trucks, ended up having cracked, developing cracked frames under the engines and are not repairable. Both of them had taken off the road, it's unsafe. We cannot drive any, any vehicles and they can't be fixed because of the cracked frames. Those are frontline vehicles for our wintertime operations, and we're looking to get approval to purchase two cabin chassis at this time, so we have them ready for the winter season.
You have the bodies for these trucks? You'd be able to use the bodies and the plows?
We have, no, we have one body that we bought last year that will be transferred, but I'll be coming to you for an RFP for the fit outs of these trucks next month. Because these are, would be purchased under a national, National Joint Powers Association. We didn't have to go out to a local bid, we have a national bid, it's allowable by the state law. So the cabin chassis would be purchased there about 12 to 16 week lead time. If you approve it tonight, then I would come back in August for the fit outs for the body swap, one body, two plow, two lightweight plows, which is what the problem was here, that the heavier plow broke the frames. Sanders will be used from what we have before, will be reutilized here as well.
Okay, any additional comments or questions? Mr. Bacon?
Yep, I have a question. How is this being paid? Where, where is the money coming from?
Yeah, it's being funded from both the transfer fund, scrap account, and not from the insurance. We just found out today that the insurance fund is not, I guess the money went back to the general fund that's in here, it's becoming out of the impact fees.
Okay, so you have enough money for these? I mean, is it...
Yes. We have over $200,000 in our impact fees, and then we also have, our capital budget request was $100,000 for the F-550s.
Yeah, but...
We're only gonna be utilizing $51,000 from the impact fees.
The capital improvement, we didn't, that wasn't funded, correct?
We didn't fund it, no. But it has to be out of capital fund in order for us to use the impact fees.
Okay. And what is the purpose of these trucks? You're gonna put Sanders on them?
Plows and Sanders, yes.
Plows and Sanders.
Those go on the small roads that we can't fit, to lock the trucks down. And we have six different routes throughout town, and this is two of our six, so one third of our small fleet would be off the road if we didn't place this.
And you couldn't find used vehicles, or you had to buy brand new?
Well, again, we don't normally replace things because they're front lines. We looked, the price of these type of trucks, used, are so close to what the new trucks would be for this National Joint Powers pricing. We're paying about $38,000 per cabin chassis. Those used trucks are about $25,000 to $28,000. Buying stuff that's maybe five to six years old, we're already gonna be down the backs, we're 20 years to be normal, before we normally replace, you know, trucks. These trucks were replaced, now we're already 15 years. If the cracks hadn't developed, we would still have them for another few years, so the new trucks will invest in the future for the next 20 years.
Okay, then, no other questions? A motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, number six, reference 4B. I guess it's you again, Mr. McGee, right?
Oh, conjunction with Mr. Waters, yes.
Yes, Mr. Waters?
This resolution was drafted for the installation of fencing around the bus yard behind the town hall annex. This is a fencing project for the bus yard as well as the physical plants that is being relocated over to O'Kaden Town Facility. The proceeds of the bond premium, as was discussed with the council in the past, will be used to pay for the fencing. I asked Mr. McGee to go out and check out if there's a MPA price for fencing. He discovered there is an MPA, MPA number 498. The quote that he actually got for the fencing is lower than the master price or unit price that came in through the state, so we're getting a better deal than the state contract price. So what this resolution does is authorize the purchase, also foregoes the competitive bidding process because the price we're getting is lower than a competitively bid state contract price. So we're doing better than competitive bidding. And then...
Can I ask?
Authorizes me to execute the contract.
Right, do we have an idea of the total? I know we've got a couple pages where totals are here, are they gonna change or go down?
The, the resolution states that it's what's on the quote provided attached.
So what's attached is, I'm seeing $18,700 and $400, and then on the next page, I see $9,900. Is that all combined?
Those, yeah, one, those are both Ventura fences, prices.
One location, the other location?
Correct.
Okay.
In comparison, we have a $20,780 bid from the MPA and then a $15,960.
I don't think we have that.
This was through an email I'm actually checking folks.
Yeah, we don't. All right, so what we have in front of us is the prices.
Correct.
And this is, we're going to approve.
One of the reasons why this is being asked this evening is that First Student is looking to relocate their buses in August.
Yes.
And unless we can get the fencing up, they will relocate them and it creates this whole problem with the human services police station.
All right, any questions? Comments? Yes, Mrs. Bacon first, I guess.
Yeah, I just have a question about the, and not to you, Mr. McGee, I'm sorry, I mean, you could answer it. I guess I have, the question is about the competitive bidding. I know it went out to the state, the state was a higher price, that was Costco fence.
Costco, correct.
And then, how did you determine that Ventura fence was less expensive? Like, I don't understand why it didn't go out to competitive bid. How do we know that's the lowest price if we didn't go out to competitive bid?
We went out to Ventura. Ventura does the majority of the fencing in the town of Cobbie over many years. So my first thought was to go out to them and get a base price of what we're looking at. And when their prices came in, we went, as to Mr. Waters' indication, we went to the state MPA first because of time, because of the timeframe. The state MPA came in higher than what Ventura fence was. It demonstrates that the state bid...
Is higher.
Is, is, is higher on both O'Kaden building and on the annex. It's upcoming, and it's all about expediency, about getting these building. We didn't have this information until just recently, when we were defined that we were definitely going with the annex as being a relocation plus relocation and that O'Kaden being a physical plant. Once we had those determinations, we started the work, and then we contacted Ventura to get the, get the numbers, and then we went to the MPA for comparison. Yes, the state MPA...